So, let's go to the Word of God. Kasi when we read the Word of God, we have to take it by its context. So hindi dapat 'yung idea natin, kundi 'yung sinasabi ng salita ng Diyos, okay po? Sinasabi dito sa 2 Timothy 3:15, "And that from a child you have known the Holy Scriptures," okay? "which are able to make you wise unto salvation through faith, which is in Christ Jesus." Sa verse 16, unta tayo. "All Scripture is given by inspiration of God, and is profitable for doctrine or teaching, reproof or rebuke, for correction and for instruction in righteousness." Verse 17, "that the man of God may be perfect." Pag sinabi pong "perfect" is "mature," okay? 'Yung word na "perfect" po dito, is tinatawag po nating mature. So ang maturity po ng isang Kristiyano ay hindi natatapos, amen? Kasi ang ating Espiritu ay unlimited, amen? Praise God, "through furnish unto all good works." So, it is an error when you read the Word of God and you are not having good works. Okay? Kaya nga makikita niyo 'yung pagiging mature mo, 'yung maturity mo ay kasabay, sumasabay ang good works, amen? Nakikita rin sa ating buhay, 'yung inspiration of God, which is the Scripture. Nang maintindihan natin ang Scripture, mas lalo pa nating napapagyaman, or we enrich our good works, amen? Sabi dito, di ba, "totally furnished." 'Yung good works natin nag-i-increase. Kaya nga 'yung ating Bible verse, di ba, sa Grace Abounds, "God is able," say, "God is able to make all grace abound toward you, so that you in every good deed you will abound," amen? Kaya dito, pag makikita natin na ang salita ng Diyos ay nabibigay sa atin ng kapangyarihan na maging mature, and when we mature, we abound as well, or we furnish. Pag sinabi 'yung furnish, di ba, pag 'yung bahay natin medyo naluluma na, di ba? Pinapaganda pa natin, ibig sabihin lang po nito, ay mas pinapa-iting pa natin, mas pinapayaman pa natin ang ating mga buhay. So ang kayamanan ng ating buhay ay 'yung salita ng Diyos, amen? Kapag walang salita ng Diyos, kahit anong yaman mo sa mundo, ay baliwala. Dahil 'yung mga yaman natin sa mundo ay temporal na, importante yan, okay? But, we have to give weight and importance to the Word of God, amen? Yan ang pang aking sinasabi. So the Holy Scriptures, why is it so described? So the term "Holy Scriptures" implies holy or sacred, or ito ay separate sa lahat ng babasahin sa mundo. Itong libro na'to, ang pangilamang libro na makapag-explain who God is. You can see a movie, you can see a movie, and ah, tawag dito, wala kang matatagpuan na revelation doon, kasi it's just a movie, alright? But in the Scripture, you will find revelation, because these are the sacred writings. And Paul said in these writings, "are able to make you wise," amen? "through salvation, through faith, which is in Christ Jesus." Di ba? Our faith is, tawag dito, ay nagiging evident kapag lalo tayong nag-aaral ng salita ng Diyos. The Scriptures are for doctrine. Doctrine means teaching, like our children. Tayo ay, lahat ng mga magulang ay, hindi naman talaga tayo teacher, pero pag nagkaroon tayo ng anak, nagiging teacher tayo, di ba? We teach things, we pass the traits, di ba, sa kanila? It's the same thing, God is passing the traits, His character unto our lives, okay? Kung sino ang Diyos, kaya importante mga kapatid, na kilala natin ang Diyos. Pero pag di natin kilala ang Diyos, naaapektoan din 'yung paglakad natin, which is the good works, amen? Which brings out reproof or evidence. Pag reproof, ibig sabihin, alam mo 'yung tama, tapos may sumasaliwa, you have to reproof, amen? Kasi hindi naman, kunwari si Jemaima, ang kanyang, tawag dito, pag kumuha niya ng pagkain, ay mali, o dapat ganito tsimsa 'yung pagkuwan ng pagkain. So we teach them, right? Hindi mo pwedeng, ah, okay lang yan. Pag mali, di ba, tinuturoan natin, ba't pag ginalakiya niya, masasanay siya. At kapag mali, ang kanya nakagisnan, mali rin lahat, di ba? Pinopost ni Sister Yana, right? Believing, di ba? Kasi when you believe, it's from the teaching. Kung ano 'yung pinaniwalaan mo, kung ano 'yung natutunan mo sa pagtuturo na 'yan. Kaya when we, when we have the Word of God, we have to teach the Word of God, amen? It brings reproof, correction, and instruction for righteousness. Now, it is also an instruction that we may know what this righteousness is. Kaya nga when you know the righteousness of God, that is the evidence of maturity, amen? Kasi may mga tao na hindi ako righteous, kandin ako ate ng ano. So, we don't condemn them, but we have to correct them, di ba? Na 'yung ginagawa mo ay hindi akma sa nature mo, sa nature, sa identity mo. Because the whole world, even believers today, have identity crisis. They think that righteousness is by their doing, but no! We can see there that there's an instruction for righteousness. So napakahaba nitong righteousness, magsisimulahin kay Kainat Abel, kay Adam and Eve, okay? So we will just focus on the importance of the reality of the Word. As believers, only the Scriptures are valid. Paliwanag ko sa inyo. For example, nanaginip ako, uy, nanaginip ako na 'yung church natin kada me, di ba? Pero dapat, we have to validate our dreams, our encounter with the Lord by Scriptures, okay? Sabi dito, "only the Scriptures are valid for teaching and evidence." Hindi enough, 'yung narinig mo 'yung boses ng Diyos, sa tingin mo ba, boses talaga ng Diyos yun? So you have to refer everything to the Word, because even Jesus Christ used the written Word, used the Scripture. Hindi siya nagsabi ng sinabi sa akin ng Diyos, ang sinabi ni Jesus Christ, kumuha siya ng Scripture to defend who God is, kung sino ang masalangan, amen? Yun ang sinabi niya eh, di ba? Sabi niya kay Satan, "fear," di ba, sabi sa Deuteronomy, "fear the Lord your God." Ang sinabi ng "fear the Lord," worship the Lord your God. Kino-rek ni Jesus si Satan na, "I will not bow to you." Sabi ng Scripture, Scripture from Deuteronomy, "fear the Lord." Sinabi dun sa Deuteronomy, "fear the Lord," sabi ni Jesus. Jesus explained the word "fear the Lord" into worship. Worship means we have reverence and awe that He is God, and this God is our beloved Father, amen? That's why the spoken Word of God is the written Word of God. Okay? There are preachers today, you have to test the spirits, okay? You have to test the spirits if they are of God or not by knowing Scripture. Because there are some people, na sasabihin nila, "Narinig nila ang Diyos kagabi, ito ang mangyayari sa buhay mo," they are fraud. Because that one is not in line with the Word of God. The Word of God exposes only, explains only Jesus Christ. Because Jesus Christ is the best explanation of who our beloved Father is, amen? And who helps us to understand, the Holy Spirit. Now, the Holy Spirit teaches us, but we need someone to teach us. Kasi sabi ni Peter sa 1 Timothy 2:2, na itong pagtuturo, kung ito, ibig sabihin, may nagturo kay Paul, kay Timothy, amen? Bakit? Si Paul tinuruan siya ni Jesus. Jesus taught Paul in the Damascus, di ba? Binigay lahat ng revelation ng grace. So we need someone to teach us the Word of God, amen? Praise the Lord! That's why today, I'm just passing the pattern unto you. Kapag ang mga anak mo ay walang natutunan sa inyo, that means hindi ka nabibigay ng instruction. That means you don't have relationship with your daughter. But you have relationship, it's automatic. Ang pagtuturo ay automatic. Ano 'yung natutunan mo kay Nanay Neng, ng isang bade? Bigay, ambigay ka lang, sa tausan na, okay, paglulu, ano 'yung natutunan mo kay Mommy Susan?
Ah...
Wag laba.
Wag laba?
Gawa 'yung bahay.
Okay, ikaw, dalaan, natutunan mo kay Daddy, kay Mommy Molly? Nanda sila, ah, galing talaga, ah, talaga? Nag-ask you, fine po. That means God is teaching us as well. Mabait kay tinuturo ng Diyos, ito, right now, tayo'y natututo. Ngayon, ang aking role is to teach you the Word, okay? It's not my own idea, okay? If this is my idea, that means that's not the Word of God. The Word of God has to explain itself, amen? It is also important to note that the Scriptures are inspired. They are God's breath, okay? That which was inspired by God, written by men. So God use men, okay? Although there's, there's a Holy Spirit that teaches us, but God use men to write them down, okay? They are inspired. When we say inspired, that means they are God's breath. May ganda po, okay lang yan. So, no book, teaching or writing is self-inspired. They are only inspired to the degree to which they agree with what is written, and that is the Scripture. When we say the Scripture, it is the written Word of God, amen? So the Word of God should be explained. Kapag sinabi lang, ano ibig sabihin ng word ng yun, Nanay? Ano ibig sabihin ng, paano nagkasalasin na Adam and Eve? Anong ibig sabihin nung trespass? Ano ibig sabihin ng transgression? So kung nandoon ang katanungan sa nabasa mo, nandun din ang kasabutan, okay? Kasi ang Old Testament ay hindi dapat ini-interprete sa Old Testament. Katulad ng bawal kumain ng dugo, kanino sinabi yun, di ba? Ito ba'y sinabi para sa lahat? Hindi po, ito ay batas ng mga hudy. Then meron silang, meron silang ritual, or tinatawag na ceremony, alright? There's a ceremony that they don't understand why bawal yun. But napita na rin sa'nyong Testament, na it's all about Jesus Christ, who followed the strict requirements of the law, that no one can pass, right? There are many people na kala nila, natupad nila lahat ang batas, and they're still struggling. What Jesus has finished, kung ano 'yung tinapos ni Jesus, wala tayong karapatan na gawin yun, dahil ito ay perfect work. Ang ating role ay to preach the gospel. That's the royal mandate of each and everyone, as kings and priests of the Most High God. Yan 'yung trabaho na gustong ipagawa sa atin ng Diyos. That's why God says we are workers of God in Thessalonians, or in, I believe, in Timothy. The inspiration of the Scriptures is vital to know, okay? It's the same thing, like what I said a while ago. If you're a, face, if you are a baker, then you have to read about baking, correct? If you're a physical education teacher, you have to know the sports. You don't have to know the linguistics. It can be for your benefit, but your main focus is sports, right? Our main focus as Christians, believers, children of God, or shall I say, mature believers, is the Word of God. Itong reality ng ating church, the reality of the church is Bible study, amen? Lahat ng mga, mga programs sa church ay tanggalin mo lahat, wag lang ang Word of God. Dahil ito ang buhay ng church. The church has to be fed by the Word of God, amen? The inspiration of the Scriptures is vital to know that there is a message. Ano ang message mo, Lord, sa Bible Scripture na'to? Anong sinasabi mo, Lord, sa Scripture na'to? Hindi 'yung sa pansarili ko, hindi 'yung sa problema ko, gusto ko, makita ko 'yung Scripture na nagsasalita sa akin. Hindi 'yung, kung ano nangyari, siguro ito ang ibig sabihin ng Lord dyan. Ngayon, nagkaroon, harang sarili mong idea about the Word. It's not the way we interpret the Bible, it's not interpreted by our feelings, it's not interpreted by what we see. It's interpreted by the Spirit, and the Spirit is life, and the Spirit produces life. Whatever problem, sabi nga ni Apostle Paul, rejoice in the Lord, because He is not affected by what He sees and what He feels during the time when He is in prison. Dahil nanindigan siya sa truth, siya ay convince, sa truth, siya ay convince sa Word, amen? Kaya kahit anong mangyari sa kanyang buhay, kahit siya ay nasa lusak ng lungkot, ay hindi siya napaapekto dahil ang feeling ay immaterial, ay, ang feeling ay, ah, hindi, ay hindi panghabang buhay. Di ba, ang feeling natin, up, down, up, down, up, down, di ba? And sometimes, because we are so down, nadadala tayo ng ating emotion, may nasasabi tayo, at nagiging consequences, hanggang sa napakahabang panahon, pinagsisisihan natin, amen? But the Spirit of God is consistent, because God is consistent. His character is consistent, amen? The Word of God is consistent. Heaven and earth pass away, may pass away, okay lang yan, always will, amen? Hallelujah! Heaven and earth may pass away, but the Word of God remains forever. Flower fades, malalanta ang mga rosas, malalagas ang mga tamo, moing ang Word of God, malalatili, magpakailan. Ang mga problema natin, nandyan, pero yan ay, pag malagas ma'yan, ang Word of God hindi kayanman malalagas. Dahil yan ay paratin natin sa dada, yan ay paratin nating kasama, yan ang ating buhay, amen? Kaya hindi po akma na ikaw'y Kristiyano, hindi ka nag-aaral ng salita ng Diyos. Hindi po ito akma, hindi ito tama, amen? Kaya ang Bible study ay para sa mga Kristiyano, para sila'y lumago, at para sila ay magpreach, doko sa mga hindi pa-Kristiyano, amen? Nay, 'yan po ang ating role. Tayo po ay may bibig para sabihin, tayo ang carrier ng glory ng Panginoon. Ano 'yung glory ng Panginoon? Bibigay ko kay na-ice cream. Ano 'yung glory ng Panginoon na sinasabi? Glory, 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 hallelujah! Ano 'yung sinasabi ng glory? Acts chapter 2, sa Isaiah, it coated in Isaiah, tang! Ang glory ay nasa ating mga bibig. Kaya pag sinabi natin, di ba, i-oddan mo ako nito, kapag hindi ka pwedeng tanggihan, kasi meron kang authority. Jesus Christ restored the dominion over you. Sorry, restored the dominion to you, amen? Sorry sa ating ginamit na preposition ma'yon, over. The, restored to you. It's not just restored, but you are a new creation in Christ, hallelujah! Mapatid po balik sa week two, ulit tayo. Chok!
Hindi ko ma-open yan pastong sanay.
Ah, sige, isan ko na lang uli, ha? Sa email ko uli, na lang, no? The Scriptures, the message of the Scriptures, okay? John 5:39, oh, I love this! Sabi dito,
Daddy nasa taas, dinakat na.
John 5:39, search, say "search." Kapag sa ano, di ba, sa soko, di ba, pa-pano nila napapatunayan na sila 'yung culprit, or sila 'yung may-ari, or sila 'yung nawawala, di ba, by investigation? The word "search" there is investigate. As Christians, as believers, we have the privilege to investigate. We have the, tawag dito, glory to search, amen? Yan 'yung privilege ng mga Kristiyano, na sinabi ng Panginoon, di ba? Na binigay ng Diyos sa mga good job ang oracles, but they did not take the advantage, okay? Binigay sa atin 'yung iPhone, kaya lang hindi mo ginagamit, walang silbe, tama po ba? Kaya God gave us the Word, and we have to take advantage of the Word! We have to use the Word, amen? Kaya ano lang po sila, let them, I'll just continue here. And they are, ano ito? First, when you investigate the Scriptures, for in them, in the Scriptures, you think, you think you have eternal life, amen? Kasi ang Diyos, ang kanyang heart ay buhay. Nagbigay siya ng buhay, hindi kayanman, Nayn, nakukunin nga ang ating buhay, dahil siya ay life giver, He is not life taker, amen? And they are, which testify of, Amen? Testify of Jesus! The Scriptures are studied because of Jesus. We search only of Jesus. Kahit anong nararamdaman mo sa panahong ito, we dedicate our time to investigate the Scriptures, because we see eternal life and we see Jesus, it testifies of Jesus. Many people know the Bible, but they use the Bible to defend what they are doing, their wrongdoing. That is wrong, that's not the Word of God. The Word of God testifies of Jesus, because Jesus is the source of eternal life, He is life, amen? The way, the truth, and the life. And you will not come to me that you may have life, amen? Praise God! The above statement made by Jesus in his discussion, ito'y sinabi niya sa mga Paliseo. He pointed out that all the prophets spoke with the same message. From Genesis to Manatei, their forefathers, the Hebrews, points the same message. The Bible has the same message. The Bible is the photo album of Jesus, amen? It is the story of Jesus, it is the testimony about Jesus. Pag sinabi pong testimony, Mangay, ito po ay parang sa korte, ito po ay selado, ito po ay, ang tawag dyan sa ano? Ah, ito ay naka, hindi lang liar mommy, ay 'yung,
Seal, seal.
Seal, may tawag dun sa patas, 'yung, ah, may tawag dun, 'yung under oath. When it's under oath to toe, kapag nagsinongaling ka, patay ka. And Jesus is not lying, He never made lie, because God cannot lie, amen? Hallelujah! Because God cannot lie, we may have life, amen? Hallelujah! Kasi dahil sa kasinongalingan, Nay, nagkaroon ang kamatayan, naniwala sila sa kasinongalingan ni Satan. Ngayon, dahil naniwala sa katotohanan, tayo ay mabubuhay. Dahil ni katiting na kasinongalingan, wala si Jesus, amen? It boils down to two, you believe in Jesus, or you don't believe in Jesus. Praise God, nakaraap ako ngayon sa mga believers, amen? Tayo naniniwala kay Jesus Christ, amen? At sa mga nakikinig na yun. Now, sabi dito, it points out the same message, the prophets, the laws, the same person, the same message, Christ. So every time we preach the Word, make sure you will bring out Christ, because the Holy Spirit will help you to bring out Christ. Yun ang ating ano, confidence, sabi ni Paul, di ba? That, I mean, Lord, I pray to the Spirit of boldness to preach Christ. May mga tao na alam ang Bible, pero wala silang boldness, bakit? Because the Bible for them is about, about ten steps, about prayer. There's nothing wrong with this. But the main point is, Christ is not revealed, amen? Amen? So the above statement was made by Jesus. So the message of the Word, the Bible is referred to as the Word of God, because it contains the written Word that testify of a person. So it's in John 1:14, the Word of God is a person, okay? And that word is Christ Jesus. John 14:6, Jesus said unto him, I am the way, I am the truth, I am the life. No man comes to the Father except by me. Without Jesus Christ, there's no other way. So praise me to God, God gave us Christ. And this is an absolute statement, there's no absolute that cannot be denied. Sabi nga ng kata, na when Jesus spoke the Word, it is true, it is infallible, it is uncaring. Walang error. If you think that there's an error, there's a problem of, there's a problem with what you think. That's why nagkaroon ng disagreement, di ba? That's why people suffers with ignorance, it's because they don't believe right away, just like in Jesus' time. That's why it is important to investigate the Scriptures. Katulad ni Philip, pangya na kilala si Jesus Christ by the Scripture, nung nakita niya, siya 'yung Mesiyas, di ba? May iba alam ang Bible, pero hindi nila nakilala ang Mesiyas, bakit? Because nakita, pinakita ng Espiritu ng Diyos kay Philip na siya ang Christ, bakit? He searched the Scripture, amen? Praise God! Kaya nga meron siyang pagka-uhal sa Panginoon, dahil 'yung word na'y nagbibigay ng excitement, amen? Nagbibigay ng attractiveness sa ating Panginoon, Jesus Christ, amen? Kaya nga po ang Word of God ay attractive, it is attractive to His people, amen? The knowledge and acquaintance about Jesus is the knowledge about God. Nung makita natin si Jesus, nakita na natin ang fukan ng Diyos, amen? It's not the literal face, but someday we will see Him face to face, and excited about it. God relates with man through Christ Jesus, is the way, the truth, and the life, sabi ko na siya. Christianity is a relationship and fellowship with God. Fellowship cannot be up and down, okay? Fellowship is consistent, kahit anong mangyari, the fellowship cannot be broken, because this is sealed by the Holy Spirit, with God found only in Christ Jesus. And the Bible should be Christ-centered, alright? Observe the praise all. All the Scriptures are Christ-centered. They are all materials to understand Christ. They're all materials to understand who our Lord Jesus is. Having the understanding of the Scripture is to see the Scriptures in the light of Christ Jesus. Tahi't sa ating mga testimony or praise report, dapat si Jesus ang naa-highlight, amen? Hindi 'yung ating mga, mga nangyayari sa ating buhay, kundi all glory must be given unto the Lord, amen? There's no problem with receiving material things, but if we put above the importance of material things about Christ, then that is not in line with the Word of God, amen? Okay lang po yan na, salamat sa Panginoon for the favor, salamat sa ating Panginoon, sa mga, sa Bisa, okay lang po yan. But we must acknowledge greater things that Christ Jesus is revealed to us. Yan ang pinakakayamanan natin, na makita natin, makilala natin ang ating Panginoon, amen? Yan po talaga, wala nang iba, wala nang ibang message, Mangay, ang Bible to see si Christ. Kaya 'yung iba, ginagamit nila 'yung salita ng Diyos para magbigay ng gift, or, o sinabi sa Bible yan, o ikaw, hindi mo ginagawa. Ngayon, sila din naman, di naman, di nila ginagawa yun, di ba? So they are using the Bible to pagtakpan ang kanyang pagkakamali, or gamiting ito para kasankapan sa kanilang gain, right? In the name of Jesus, hindi dapat gano'n ang pagtuturo. Kaya nga maganda po na si Jesus lang, di ba? The promise of the message, sabi dito sa Hebrews 6:13, "For when God made promise to Abraham, because he could swear by no greater, he swore by himself," amen? Because God, what God can do, He can do, okay? But God can do it, Mangay, on His nature. Hindi siya pwedeng pumatay, hindi siya pwedeng, hindi kanya pwedeng i-hate, hindi kanya pwedeng bigyan ng sakit, dahil hindi yun ang nature ng Diyos, amen? Ang promise ng Diyos ay eternal life. Sabi dyan sa Galatians 3:16, ang promise of the eternal Word of God, sabi dun, 'yung curse na nangyari dahil sa kadagawa ng tao, sa Christ pass ng tao, nagkaroon ng curse sa land, dahil sa ginawali Jesus Christ, dahil napato siya sa coast ng parbaro. Ngayon, tayo tumatanggap, tayo ay, sumas, tawag dito, tayo ay nakatanggap pasens ng eternal life. Eternal life is already a reality, Mangay. Kaya na, it's a reality already, eternal life. Hindi 'yung, pag namatay ako, dun na ang magkaka-eternal life, no? The moment we believe Christ, eternal life begins. Kasi eternal life is not bounded by times. Kapag tumatak mo 'yung oras, ang one second kaya na one second sa akin. May iba kaming ginagawa, may ibang place and time, pero 'yung Espiritu ng Diyos, hindi siya bounded ng time, Mangay. Kaya kahit nasan man tayo, ang Espiritu ng Diyos ay nasa atin. Hindi iman Espiritu, iisang ang ating Espiritu, amen? Dahil hindi ito pwedeng idescribe in material. Oblong ba siya, pare sukat ba siya, no? Kaya nga siya Espiriti. Kaya nga sabi ni Apostle Paul, sa 2 Corinthians 12, sabi ni Apostle Paul, "Meron akong mga nakita in the spiritual realm na hindi ko minding, hindi ko mapaliwanag." Kasi it remains, na hindi dapat mapaliwanag, dahil pag ito ay pinaliwanan mo sa matinan, hindi natin maintindihan, marami natin ito ma-misinterpret, amen? Kaya nga marami tayong mga ginagawi ano o, 'yung patet ng bread and juice, di ba? Praise God, mga tayong Panginoon, no? Na tayo'y lumalago sa ating pang, baktisim, yan, isahin natin yan. 'Yung baktisim, the real meaning of baktisim. Baktisim ba ay water, Mangay? Ano ba ang ibig sabihin ng baktisim talaga? Kasi we have one Lord, one Father, one baktisim, one faith, Ephesians 3. Natututo po ba tayo? Nakikita po pa natin ang kaganda ni Jesus sa kanyang mga salita. Here, the writer explained, sa Hebrews 6:14, "God made a promise, and He confirmed it with an oath." 'Yung oath na 'yan is, kailangan may dalawang tao, tama? Two witness. Kaya pag may pinipirmaan tayo, Nay, bayan, dalawa ang witness. Dahil kapag isa lang ang witness, pwedeng bias siya. Kailangan may isa pa. Sino ba dito 'yung kinasatapas, isa lang witness? Wala, di ba? Kailangan dalawa. Oo, kailangan kumuha kayong dalawa, hindi kompleto, dalawa'y sasayang doon. Ibig sabihin, there are two witnesses. And those witness are heaven and earth, God and man, but man can't And those witness on heaven and earth, God and man, but man cannot live. Man cannot live by this oath, kasi man ay sinongaling. Nabiktima siya ng kasinongalingan ng devil. Tayo ay naging victim ng devil. But praise me to God, tayo mga victim, merong isa nag-take, naging victim sa cross. Naging victim siya ng kasinongalingan. Kinuha niya lahat ng paparusahan si Jesus Christ. Siya'y naging victim. And tayo ay naging victor dahil sa victim. And ngayon, ang resurrect siya from the dead. He never lies. When, when the apostles, when the disciples said, "He is alive," I believe he is alive. Because it is the Spirit that testifies in our hearts that Jesus is alive. Mangay, Jesus is alive. Because there's hope in the eternal life of the Son of God in our lives, amen? That's why we don't wait to die. We wait for the appearance of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Kaya nga po, we need to learn the word, the reality of the word! Sorry, malapit pa naasang bolis ko. But the promise of God is revealed. Nagstart kay Abraham, na si Abraham'y hindi makapaglive. Kaya nga si Abraham, nagkasalanin si Abraham. Yung asawa niya, sinabi niya, "Kapatid niya." Itinatwa niya, "Ay, hindi ko 'yan asawa, kapatid ko 'yan." Oh my goodness! Iyon, sabi ko kay Dayana na, "Kapatid ko lang siya, naku sampalin ako niyan." Di ba? Na hindi ko siya pinakalarang asawa dahil sa buhay, di ba? At ako siyang papatay siya. Hindi siya naniwala lang siya ay kayang ipagtanggo ng Panginoon, amen? Dahil kayang ipagtanggo ng Panginoon, maliwala lang kaya sa kanya. When we believe, we trust of who our God is. Walang mapapaano sa akin. I'm saddened with what happened. Pero hindi ako dun sa mga bata. I'm saddened with what happened. But I don't want to preach that one because I want to preach life and hope. Because the Word of God is the final authority of our lives, amen? But I, we pray for those people na, nawaw, napakinggan nila ang salita ng Diyos and I pray for them. Then I know Jesus Christ, amen? That the promise that came is Christ. Hindi materyal na bagay, kundi a person of grace. Therefore, the Word of God has integrity requiring no input from man. Acts 13:32 to 34. Walang kinalama ng tao. God provide everything by Christ. God has fulfilled the promise he made. The Acts of Jesus, the Gospel, his death, burial, and resurrection is the Gospel of God. 1 Corinthians 15:1 to 4 and Romans 10:8 to 10. "When you believe in your heart and speak that the Lord, Jesus Christ, is Lord, you shall be saved." Amen? So that's why the word is so important. The best communication is the word. Amen? That's why we have to put importance on the word. Kahit sa mga pamilya natin, we have to put our devotion. Kaya nga tinawag siyang devotion dahil tayo dapat ay maglaan ng tanod ang oras dahil ito ay buhay. Hallelujah, amen? The reality of God's work, hindi po sinasabi na kailangan maging ano ka, fanatic, okay? There's a difference between fanatic and devotion. Pag sinabing fanatic, you're just idoling God, walang relationship. Pero pag sinabing devotion, because you have relationship with God, that means you're doing the things because out of your heart, the Lord loves you. And out of your heart, God has filled you with His love. Amen? A proper appreciation will start with, basahin mo nga to. Pero kung hindi tayo makapag-read, meron audio Bible. Pero kapag warang audio Bible, makinig kayo sa akin or kay Pastor Pracy. Or Dayana sa December.
Depende daw sa akin.
Okay, it's time to read, meron ka mang ano. So read the scriptures, study the scriptures. It's not because you ha, you will teach or you will stand up, but because this is your life. Kaya nga magandang preaching is 'yung life. Naranasan mo, naintindihan mo, amen? Hindi lang naranasan, sorry. Dapat merong revelation ang Panginoon, 'yung tinatawag natin, rema. Coming to an understanding that it is about the message embodied the person of Jesus. Therefore, the word has to be taught. Hindi lamang siya kinukot, but it should be taught and preached. Amen? That's why, what, hindi po pagaling ng preaching. It's, it's a matter of, nasa kondisyon lang, ay, hindi kondisyon. Nasa ano lang, kung pini- preach ba natin, o hindi. Okay? Wala pong pagaling ang preacher. Dahil kahit 'yung mga di madaling mag-preach, they can still convey what the Word of God is. Because it's not the preacher, it is the, the word that we preach, amen? Kaya preach the word in season and out of season. Kahit hindi maganda ang pakiramdam mo, kahit anong nangyari sa mo, preach the word. Kasi hindi ikaw ang dahilan, kundi 'yung word. The word can defend itself. Amen? Hindi mo pwedeng sabi, hindi namang totoo ang word eh. Hindi, hindi 'yan magbabago kahit anong comment perp. How is the word made available? The word is available to us and that word is near our mouth. Mangay, ang ating vivid, ang ating asset. Well, a servant of God and an apostle of Jesus Christ according to the faith of God's lead and acknowledging of the truth, which is after godliness. So godliness, the result of godliness is acknowledging the truth. Amen? Pag sinabi nating totoo ang sinabi ng Diyos, that's godliness, nai. Yun 'yung resulta, nag-agree tayo sa katotohanan ng Diyos. In hope, ang pag-asa ng eternal life, which God, that, napakibasa nito.
That cannot lie.
Cannot lie. Amen? Promise before the world began. Ano 'yung promise na yun? Eternal life. And that eternal life came by Jesus Christ. Before the world began, meron nakagad plano ang Panginoon, but has in due times manifested His word through preaching, which is committed unto Paul according to the commandment of God, our Savior. Ano 'yung commandment ng God, preaching. Di ba bakit pa kailangan mag-Bible study, sinabi ng Diyos?
Babies come here.
Di ba, Mangay? Pag sinabi mong, isabit mo dyan 'yung parol. Walang magtatanong sa bahay. Bakit dyan isasabit? Dahil ikaw ang authority ng bahay. And our authority is God. Our authority is Jesus, amen? Pag sinabi ni Jesus, hindi pa natin nandindihan. That's why faith takes place first before we address them. Amen? Nung nakita na, oo nga no, nung nauna ang faith, naintindihan na natin kung bakit ginagawa ng Diyos. Amen? Si Jesus ang explanation ng lahat ng ating mahalapag-aaral. Hallelujah! The word is made available by preaching. Alright? Paul taught from the scriptures only. Walang sinabi sa scriptures na magpaconcert tayo para mag-evangelistic. Hindi. Ang sinabi is available by preaching. Alright? We sing songs to the Lord for, because we are overflowed with grace. Colossians 3:16. But singing songs is not the way to preach the word, but by preaching itself. Amen? The same as the apostles in Ephesals, he knew the importance of the teaching of the word, doctrine, teaching. He also ensured the word was not mixed with the wisdom of men and teaching. Kaya nga, ang tapat na nagtuturo ng salita ng Diyos ay hindi dapat na hinahaluhan ng sarili niyang interpretation, kundi interpretation ng banalo ng Espirito. So salvation is received by the preaching. So also the believer receives knowledge of the word because sa pagkanta, hindi naman siya na-explain. Ang pagkanta ay ating expression, tama ka dun? Ating expression. Kailangan natin ipaliwanag dahil ang word kailangan ng pagpapaliwanag para magkaroon ng clarity. Kaya may mga tao ayaw ng paliwanag, it's okay. But dun sa mga gusto ng paliwanag, may benefit, nai. Dahil sinasabi natin, it is profitable. Pag sinabi profitable dahil profit, ibig sabihin may ganansya. May ganansya ang pag-e-explain ng word. Amen? Bakit hindi na tayo nagwo-communion? In-explain natin. Bakit hindi na tayo nagbabacism of the water? Ie-explain ko next time. Okay? 1 Corinthians 1:18. "For the preaching of the cross is to them that prayerish foolishness." Pero sa atin, ang kaligtasan. Amen? Power of God, the power of God to save. The power of God is only by salvation. Hindi po naninira ang Diyos. Hindi siya nagde-destruction. Hindi siya nagwawata. Ang kasalanan na nagwata, ang kamatayan na naninira. Ngayon, si Jesus Christ namatay para sa atin. Kaya ngayon, sa atin, ang preaching of the cross ay kapangyarihan ng Diyos. I'm so excited sa mga revelation ng ating Panginoon, amen? The believer must never get bored. Must never get bored! The believer must never get bored with hearing or reading the word. Dahil 'yan ang kamirang buhay. 'Yan ang kapangyarihan. Kung ito, di ba si Ding ang bato, ang kapangyarihan ni Donna ay nasa bato? Eh, parating ang hinahanap ang Ding ang bato! Alright? The same thing, ang power ay nagre-reside sa atin at ito ay lumalabas when we hear, when we preach, and hearing the preaching of the word, which is the power of God. Ngayon, tapat ang salita ng Diyos ay malayo sa preaching of the cross, hindi 'yan salita ng Diyos. Kahit nasa Bible 'yan. Kasi dahil sa nag-e-explain, nag-iiba. Kahit nasa Bible siya, tapos 'yung explanation iba. Ay, ay, napakalayo ang kanyang sinasabi. Wala sa kontekstong ang kanyang sinasabi. Hindi ito Word of God, Mangay. Ang Word of God ay ineexposed siyang preaching of the cross. Lumalabas ang excellence ni Jesus. Lumalabas ang obedience ni Jesus. Lumalabas ang laban Panginoon through Jesus. Amen? So the believer must not get bored about the Word of God because it is the basis of our faith. Amen? Hindi lamang siya natatapos sa salita. Ito ay nagkakaroon ng kaganapan sa ating buhay, amen? So the Word of God is the final basis of everything that we do. Dahil si Jesus Christ, siya inaun niya itong example. Nagko-cout din si Jesus Christ sa scripture. Even though he is God. Hence, three things are vital for every believer. To hear the word. Say it. Second, read the word and believe the word. Amen? Yun ang ating role, no, as Christians, sa ating paglago. To hear the word, to read the word, to believe the word, preach the word. Kasi ano ipi- preach mo kung wala ka napakinggan? Sabi ni Apostle Paul, no? "Papaano silang maligtas kung hindi nila napakinggan?" Romans 10. And so it is important that Christian will realize the weight and the beauty of the Word of God. And the Word of God is Christ. Without Christ, there's no word. Without Christ, there's nothing to preach. Dahil merong Kristo na ang pakarami nating pwedeng sabihin. Amen? Hindi ka mauubusan ng sasabihin, Mangay. You did, you don't need clever words to entice people na maliwala sila. Ang Holy Spirit ang gagawa ng paraan, Mangay. Para sila ay tumanggap sa Panginoon. Dahil ito rin ang kagustuhan ng Diyos ng lahat ay mahal ng Diyos. Ngunit tayong mga namigtas na, gusto rin ang Panginoon na tayo ay makarating sa knowledge of truth. Na malaman natin itong salvation na tinanggap natin. Dahil itong salvation na ito ay hindi basta-basta. Ito ay obedience ni Jesus Christ. Kaya we have to continue to hear the word, to read the word, to believe the word. Amen? Meron pa ba akong oras?
Okay na po sa'yo.
Mag na lang. Meron pa lang isa eh, ito, 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 ah, saglis lang, ito na lang.
Sige, sige.
Stephen saying, oh, 'yan na 'yan. The essence of Bible study, five minutes lang. Anong essence ng Bible study? 2 Timothy, the same, di ba? "All scripture is breathed out by God and profitable." Pag sinabi, "All scripture from Genesis to Malakay." "All scripture is breathed out by God and profitable." So like God's breath, but hindi lahat ay patungkol sa Diyos. Nagge-get niyo? Patulad ng si Satan, ano 'yung sinabi ni Satan? Ay, nasa salita ng Diyos pero hindi ito katotohanan. Ano sinabi ni Satan? "Pag kinain mo to, ikaw ba'y mabubuhay." Ito ay kasinongalingan, pero nasa Bible siya o wala? Siya ay nasa Bible, pero sinasabi ng Bible na si Satan ay sinongaling. Okay? So meron bang kasinongalingan sa Bible? Yes. Ano 'yung mga kasinongalingan na yun? Kung sino 'yung nagsalita? Sino 'yung nagsalita? Yung ahas. Ang Diyos ang nagsalita, totoo yun. Amen? Kaya 'yung po 'yung tinatawag na explaining the word, teaching, nai, teaching. Without teaching, you cannot see the clarity of all scripture. Wala siyang kapakinabangan, nai, kapag walang pagtuturo. Kasi, oh, magluto ka na dyan ng adobong kangkong, ngayon hindi mo tinuruan. Hindi ka nagpaturo. Oh, na, ano nangyari sa adobong kangkong? Naging ginataang kangkong. Because walang pagtuturo. Although lahat ng sangkap ay tama, pero walang pagtuturo, walang naging ganansya. Walang profit. Kaya importante po makinig tayo ng salita ng Diyos. Amen? That's why there's reproof, there's correction. Correction is not condemnation. Reproof is not rejection. It is important for mature believers. Amen? And training for righteousness. Hallelujah! So the purpose or the essence of Bible study is teaching. Teaching. Mga teachers. Di ba mahirap magturo? Lalo na kapag hindi ka pinapakinggan. Pero ito 'yung mandate, royal mandate natin. Bear, bear with me. We are bear witnesses of the reality of the majesty of God, that is Jesus Christ. Kaya kahit mahirap magturo, turo lang tayo ng turo. Dahil sa lahat ng ating tutuhan, Diyos ang nagpapakita. Hindi natin kailangang ipatunayan, sa mga tao na tayo'y magaling. Hindi natin kailangang patunayan na tayo ang, tinawag ng Panginoon, ang Diyos mismo ang magpapakilala sa'yo at sa atin. Na tayo ay anak. Amen? So the word teaching is doctrine. It is the word explanation. Di ba may mga times nga, alam naman natin na sagot, tapos ine-explain pa lang. Mas maganda po ine-explain, bakit? Dahil hindi mo narirealize, barunong ka na rin mag-explain. Minsan sabi ko, bakit pa kailangan ang pag-aralan nito? Tapos nung naalala ko na, ay, ang importante palang malaman 'yung mga grammar. Dati wala ang pakialam lang sa grammar, ngayon, ngayon, gusto ko na siyang pag-aralan. Bakit? Dahil nagkaroon ka na lang, hindi ka na naging bore. Naging connected ka na dun sa sinasabi ng pinag-aaralan mo, which is, sa ating mga Kristiyano, tayo ay connected sa ating Panginoon, amen? Hindi po pwedeng connected ka sa Panginoon, connected ka sa bahay, pero hindi ka naga-abide sa word. Sabi ni Jesus Christ, abide in me and my words abide in you. Kasi yun ang paraan ng Diyos para tayo ay tuhuan niya. Kaya hindi tayo tinuturoan ng Diyos ng mga masakit, karandaman. Hindi yun ang paraan ng Diyos, ang paraan ng nagdisiplina ng Diyos ay word. Say word. Kaya reality ng bawat Kristiyano ay salita ng Diyos. Nagtuha ko eh, Mangay, para ti siya nagse-share about the Word of God. Let's dive into the Word of God. Hindi natin kailangang sabi na hindi natin alam ang Bible. Hindi 'yan totoo dahil tayo ay may reaksyon sa ating Panginoon. Kilala tayo ng Panginoon, kahit 'yung number ng ating buok, alam ng Panginoon na e-explain ng Panginoon kung sino tayo. Amen? Dahil mahal mo na halat tayo ng Panginoon. Hallelujah! Tapos ito na dito. Teaching in the local church will provide evidence. Reproof means evidence. The Word of God is evidence na merong Diyos. Kaya may, time will come, may taong dadating sa inyo, sabi na hindi totoo ang Diyos, you are able to correct it. You are able to show evidence because you have the testimony of the Word of God.